Okay. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing for April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the meeting will not be occurring in person. We are using teleconference system and the audio is available on LTC Channel ninety-nine. Those wishing to speak on behalf of a petition are allowed to call in. But it should be known that we have four members on the conference tonight. All petitions for approval must go with a four zero vote. One nay vote will make it fatal. We're gonna, um, we have several applications that have requested a continuance under continued business and new business. We will go through those items as continuances and then open up to the itemized applications. Moving forward, under continued business, GB two thousand and twenty dash one, petition variance and special permit by Hector Rodriguez at fifteen Whipple Street, Section five point one, Section six point one, Section twelve point one subsection B. The applicant has requested a continuance of this hearing until May eleventh, two thousand and twenty. May I have a motion?
Mark Brier seconds the motion, oh, excuse me.
The clerk Sean Callahan, Mr. Chairman, if you're going to make a motion on GB two thousand and twenty dash one for fifteen Whipple Street for a continuance of a variance and special permit to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Chairman Perrin requests a second.
Mark Brier seconds the motion.
Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved continuance.
Member PAC.
Approved continuance.
Member Callahan.
Approved continuance to May eleventh.
Member Briere.
Approved continuance.
Okay, moving forward under continued business, Chairman Perrin, GB two thousand and twenty dash fifteen for a special permit, Jose Ribario at one forty-five, one forty-seven Wolfing Street, Section four point five point two subsection one. The applicant has requested a continuance of this hearing until May eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Mr. Clerk, may I have a motion?
Clerk Sean Callahan, I'd like to make a motion on GB two thousand and twenty dash fifteen for a special permit on one forty-five, one forty-seven Wolfing Street to continue this petition, uh, public hearing to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Chairman Perrin requests a second.
Uh, Vice Chairman PAC, uh, second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved till May eleventh.
Member PAC.
Uh, approved to May eleventh.
Member Callahan.
Approved continuance to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Member Briere.
Approved continuance.
That petition has been continued. Moving on under new business, GB two thousand and twenty dash twenty, special per- permit, Harrison Barna, four sixty-four Central Street, uh, Section four point five, the applicant has requested a continuance of this hearing until May eleventh, two thousand and twenty. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Clerk Sean Callahan, I'd like to make a motion on GB two thousand and twenty dash twenty for a special permit on four sixty-four Central Street to continue the public hearing to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
May I have a second?
Mark Brier seconds the motion.
I have a roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin.
Approved continuance to May eleventh.
Member PAC.
Uh, approved continuance to May eleventh.
Member Callahan.
Approved continuance to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Member Briere.
Approved continuance.
That petition has been approved for continuance. Moving forward under new business, Chairman Perrin, GB two thousand and twenty dash twenty-one, for variance, Catherine Flood, care of Emerson One Hundred Real Estate LLC at two four six point one Market Street, Section nine point two point five subsection three, Section six point one point four. The applicant has requested a continuance of this hearing until May eleventh, two thousand and twenty. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Clerk Sean Callahan, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, GB two thousand and twenty dash twenty-one for variance on two forty-six point one Market Street to continue the public hearing of this matter to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
May I have a second?
Uh, Vice Chairman PAC, um, second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved continuance to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Member PAC.
Approved continuance to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Member Callahan.
Approved continuance to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Member Briere.
Approved continuance.
Moving forward under the new business, Chairman Perrin, GB two thousand and twenty dash twenty-two for a special permit, John Gary, care of Mont Castle LLC at eleven eighty Middlesex Street, Section four point five point two subsection one. The applicant has requested a continuance of this hearing until May eleventh, two thousand and twenty. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
I agree, Mr. Chairman, I'd like, uh, Clerk Sean Callahan, I'd like to make a motion to GB two thousand and twenty dash twenty-two for special permit on eleven eighty Middlesex Street to continue the public hearing to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
May I have a second?
Mark Brier seconds the motion.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved continuance to May twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Strike that, May eleventh.
Member PAC.
Uh, approved continuance to, to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Member Callahan.
Approved continuance to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Member Briere.
Approved continuance.
Yeah, that concludes the continued, uh, business to May eleventh. Today's meeting, Chairman Perrin under continued business, we have GB two thousand and twenty dash fourteen for variance, our new Realty LLC at eleven Center Street, Section six point one point ten. Our new Realty LLC is seeking variance approval to construct the driveway at eleven seven, eleven Center Street that would encroach on the rear spot side, rear lot line setback. The property is the urban neighborhood multifamily zoning district and requires variance under approval, Section six point one point ten, for the minimum setback from the rear lot line and for any other relief required over zoning ordinance. Is the petition here?
Member Callahan.
Approved continuance to May eleventh, two thousand and twenty.
Member Briere.
Approved continuance.
Excuse me.
Hi, May.
Hi.
This is, this is not a continuance.
To May eleventh. Today's meeting, Chairman Perrin under continued business, we have GB two thousand and twenty dash fourteen.
Yes, I'm here.
Do you have the TV on, you might want to turn the TV down.
Yeah, I have it on computer, online. I'm watching online live right now.
We're getting feedback, you might want to, you might want to mute it.
Uh?
You're gonna have to mute it, ma'am.
I have to mute it, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, can you just tell us about your petition at eleven Center Street?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Let me see, let me, oh, barely hear, hold on, hold on one second. Okay, yeah.
Okay, so ma'am, you're, you're seeking a variance for a driveway at eleven Center Street?
Yes.
Provide us with some information?
Uh-huh. Yes.
And what is the purpose of the petition?
Uh, the purpose of the petition, uh, is adding a driveway. Uh, currently, there is no off-street parking. Um, it's a, um, four-bedroom, single-family, about two thousand five hundred. It's a large, um, single-family with no off-street parking. Um, I'm adding a driveway and a parking lot in the back with, uh, drainage, a leaching basin, four feet by four feet, um, in the corner, in the back corner, um, to collect the rainwater. Um, last time, it was, um, the only request, uh, through the last hearing was adding a, uh, topography, which we did, so that was submitted. Last time, it was, um, the documents were not complete. We have now submitted, um, a more detailed, um, grading plot plan.
Oh. And has everyone had an opportunity to re- review the topogra- topography plan? I know I saw it online.
Oh, yeah, I submitted.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to? So you've completed your application, you provided the topography.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you have any other comments at this time?
You asking me, no?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, sorry.
Oh, oh, do I have co- do I have?
Do you have any other comments?
Uh, comments, no, I'm, I'm looking, um, for approval, if it's okay, um. Yeah, no comments.
Okay. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the pa- public.
Okay.
Anyone wishing to speak, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
I'm sorry.
This is just a formality, ma'am.
Formality. Stay, I, 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 it's what, stay by?
Ma'am, I'm just, I'm just opening it up to the public, you can just.
Okay, okay.
Stand by for one second.
Okay.
Here we are, any, anyone wishing to speak in favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is closed. Uh, for the record, uh, this evening, we have four members on teleconference. Therefore, in order for the, uh, petition to be approved, you'll have to have a four zero approval. Uh, one nay vote will be fatal. It will require you to, um, wait the two-year waiting period. Well, at this point, I'd like to open up the board. Ma'am?
Uh-huh.
We're gonna open up to the board.
It, it, I have to wait to twenty days, right?
No, ma'am, we're gonna open up, we're gonna open up to questions for the board right now. Mr. Vice Chair G. PAC.
Okay.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this, this is, uh, Van PAC, the Vice Chairman. Um, you know, I, I did get a chance to, to see all the updated plans. Um, I think, in, in my opinion, um, she, she and the, uh, person she's working with has come, comes up with the documents that we asked for in the last meeting. So, um, from, from my perspective, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, I don't see any, any, uh, any issue here. I think, uh, I think relief can be granted. Um, so from my perspective, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, I'll probably vote in favor. So, um, I wish the applicant the best of luck, and those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Chairman Perrin, thanks, thank you. Uh, Sean Callahan.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chairman, this is Sean Callahan, the clerk. Um, first, uh, I just want to make sure we're clear, so that the record's clear. Um, to the petitioner, um, I don't believe you stated your name and, uh, your address on the record. Could you just tell us, um, your name and address, so we just have it on the record that you are there on this petition?
Okay. Yes, my name is May Huang, representing Andrew Realty LLC. The address is eleven Center Street in Lowell, Massachusetts, zero one eight five two.
Okay, thank you, no, I just want to make sure, because we have, we do have our, uh, uh, the, our associate planner, uh, Francesca, who's, uh, kicking the minutes on this, and I make sure it's on the record.
Oh, oh, that's, that's.
So that's okay. Now, it's an unusual situation, obviously, so we just want to make sure, uh, the public record, uh, purposes we have are all in there. Um, that being said, I mean, I, yeah, I, I thank you very much for providing the new updated plans.
Okay.
I remember the last hearing, there was, um, you know, a couple, a couple of minor details and things that we were, we, we attempted to be left out, um, which it looks like those have been alleviated, uh, with the new plan, so I do appreciate, uh, you providing, uh, that information. I, I think I had a couple of questions just for Fran. Um, Fran, I, if I recall, I believe the, uh, there was an updated comment memo whereby it was noted that there's no longer a need for variance relief for the rear yard setback, is that correct?
That's correct. I believe the new plan shows a setback of about four feet and some inches, uh, and the setback is three feet, so the relief is just for the side yard and the building setback, which are about one foot.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear on that on the record too, because the, uh, the note, uh, I just want to make sure, because the note for the public hearing just, uh, mentioned the rear yard setback, but it also does say for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance, which would cover the side yard and building setback request as well, correct? Fran?
Uh, sorry, could you say that again, Sean?
Yeah, so, um, the question was, so the public, I just want to make sure from the public record, uh, the note, the notation of the notice only mentioned the minimum, the setback for the rear lot line, but that's been alleviated, but because it does say for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance, that would also cover side yard, uh, any petition, any relief that we may grant on the side yard and building setback.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, just want to make sure that that's clear. Um, but, um, yes, and I share the sentiments of, uh, member, uh, Vice Chairman PAC as well. Uh, I thank the applicant for providing the information, updating information. Um, at the last hearing, I, there was, I didn't think that there was much issues. I mean, it is a tight squeeze there. It's good to get the parking off of the streets, especially in that neighborhood, uh, Center Street, so, uh, Center, for the central, that central area, uh, because there is a very, very tight squeeze there, and, uh, I think this will be, uh, very helpful for the neighborhood and very helpful for the property, and I wish the applicant the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Strike that, thank you, Sean. Uh, Mark?
Uh, yeah, Mark Brier speaking. The, the relief that we can provide this evening, uh, will be a welcome relief to the, the neighborhood itself as, uh, off-street parking, the need for it is, is in desperate need in this neighborhood, and as a result, I will support the petition.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briere. Um, so ma'am, you've, you've heard the comments of, of the board.
Mm-hmm.
Do you wish to go forward with the vote this evening?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, that being said, Chairman Perrin requests to Mr. Clerk for a motion.
Uh, agree, Mr. Chairman, this is Clerk Sean Callahan, I'd like to make a motion on GB two thousand and twenty dash fourteen for eleven Center Street for a variance approval under Section six point one point one zero for minimum setback, uh, side yard setback and minimum building setback to construct a driveway that would encroach on those setbacks.
May I have a second?
Oh, this is Vice Chairman PAC, um, I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Approved petition.
Member PAC.
Uh, approved petition.
Member Callahan.
Approved petition.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Ma'am, your, your petition has been approved, we wish you the best of luck, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, have a great evening.
You too, thank you.
Take care.
Okay.
Chairman, bye-bye. Chairman Perrin on the new business, GB two thousand and twenty dash twelve, a special permit and variance, Peter Marsh, care of Saint Vincent de Paul, fourteen eighty-eight Middlesex Street, Section six point three point two subsection eight, Section six point three point two subsection nine. Peter Marsh has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals on behalf of Saint Vincent de Paul for various approvals to install a freestanding sign larger than thirty square feet and special permit approval to install two internally illuminated signs, the freestanding sign plus a wall sign. At one, at one four eight eight Middlesex Street, the property is located in regional retail IR zoning district. Fourteen eighty-eight Middlesex Street requires variance approval for Section three point two, Section eight for the size, special permit approval for Section six point three point nine. Strike that, six point three point two subsection nine for the internal illumination for any other relief required over zoning zoning ordinance. Is the petitioner on?
Yes, I am, this is Dan Hutchins from the Hansford Farms.
Good evening, sir, can you just tell us a little bit about your petition?
Sure, uh, there's two parts to the petition. One is a special permit for, um, internally illuminated, um, the signage, and the other is for size fifty square feet, uh, versus thirty square feet, two separate, uh, a, a, uh, special permit and a variance.
Okay. All right. Um, so sir, as I previously made us mention, this is Chairman Perrin. Uh, we have four members this evening. In order for approval, you'll need a four oh vote. Uh, one nay vote will, one nay vote will be a fatal to your petition. Do you wish to move forward?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments at this time, sir?
On my behalf?
Yes.
No, I'd just like to start by saying thank you to the board for considering the position, petition.
Okay, thank you, sir. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is closed. Chairman Perrin, I'd like to open up to the board, Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just, uh, yeah, we do the petition, I don't see any real, uh, yeah, issues with this. The only, uh, you know, questions and then usually ask these on these internally illuminated signs is, uh, the petition, uh, does the petitioner know what the hours of, uh, the hours of the business are gonna be, uh, so we can, we usually try to set the hours of illumination on these, uh, things, so I just want to ask the petition.
Sure, if I could. The, um, the hours illum- illumination on the signage, uh, will be dusk to close on the illuminated portion of the, uh, ground sign. The message center is typically illuminated from opening, uh, to close. Uh, that lights during the daytime for visual, while the internally illuminated cabinet portion does not. This is achieved through a timer photocell combination.
Okay. And so the, um, yeah, so the, the freestanding sign, the bottom half is one of those, uh, again, one of those signs, message, illuminated messaging signs that, that flash different messages throughout the course of, uh, throughout the course of the thing, is that correct?
Correct, and, and typically, the, uh, message center, in terms of, uh, turnover time or hold times, is between eight and ten seconds of a static message. And what this does, it gives the motor traffic, uh, plenty of time to read the message, and it also eliminates any flashing or moving aspect that all codes, uh, do not allow, including yours.
Yeah. Um, okay, well, I, I got no problems with that. I know we got, we got a lot of these coming up, and I think we're trying to, I know Jared Palves in the, uh, in DPD is working on a, uh, centralized plan, I believe, on these signs, because we're getting more and more of these, uh, messaging signs that are going to be popping up, especially the LED, uh, the, uh, with the type of technology that we have. Um, I think my, uh, I have no problems with the, with the petition itself and with the signage. Uh, as far as the illuminated sign, as far as the messaging sign, uh, I'll leave it to my fellow board members. I'd just like to make a suggestion, um, that, uh, maybe we could put this on for, I mean, I understand where, whether, uh, different circumstances, maybe put this on for, uh, a short administrative review, maybe six months or so, just so we can get an idea of how this, how the, uh, messaging signage is working. And by that time, um, you know, maybe I can ask Fran. Fran, uh, do you have any idea, I know Jared's working on the signage, uh, the signage, uh, zoning, or zoning rules or whatever. Do you have any idea how, what the status of that is right now? Just kind of get a, get a sense of how that's going, um?
Um, it's still in progress. It's something that we've been working on during this time of, um, remote work. Uh, we've been really looking into that, but I am not sure specifically where the, where it stands with regards to this type of signage.
Yeah. I don't know, do you think if I, I mean, I'm suggesting it six months, but if you think you need more, you need more time? I just kind of, we, we just want to get an idea of how, how, you know, if these, these things are operating, you know? We don't want to know all the difference throughout the city, uh, and I guess my, my suggestion would be six months, but I don't know, I just, I guess, I don't know. What, what, what are you, what are you, what are your, what are your thoughts on that, what you got to, how, where the process is in that sign?
Uh, sir, are you asking me, Sean? Sean?
Yes, I hear you, yep.
Were you asking me that question?
Yes.
Was just, was just me? Um, I would say, I'm not familiar with the administrative review period, uh, but in terms of conditioning approval, I would say that the best way to move forward with that is to have, to condition, um, to have a condition that says that the applicant will work with DPD to, uh, and will obtain like DPD's approval for the messaging prior to applying for a building permit, and that way we can dig deeper into the messaging and the turnover rate, um, and the content of the sign, and have some oversight of that prior to their applying for a building permit, just because I'm not familiar with the administrative review, uh.
Okay, yeah, that, yeah, maybe that makes, maybe that makes more sense, uh, as a condition, instead of putting it on the administrative review. Uh, so, uh, I'll leave it to my fellow board members, whatever their thoughts are. I mean, I, maybe just that, that is a condition of working with DPD on, uh, uh, the signage and the turnovers and all that. If, I guess if anything comes up, then you'll just have them come before, back before a board, per, you know, review, correct, Fran?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right. Sounds good, and, uh, I guess that's the other thing, the condition that we probably, we usually impose is that the internally illuminated signage would be, um, on, uh, one hour before death till one hour after closing, or, or, till one hour after sunset or closing, whichever comes later. Uh, if that's, if the applicant is, uh, in agreement with that condition, uh, that's usually what we usually propose for a condition.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, I think that condition is fine, this is Dan again. Uh, just to back up for a second, on the, um, condition for approval for the messaging, could we set the, I mean, I'd like to be allowed to use the messaging when the, when the location opens. Could we set the condition on the, what I suggested, the eight to ten second hold times? Um, and no, um, no, uh, flashing animated, because, you know, that's all written in every code anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, what, 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 what we're gonna condition it on is, is you work with DPD to, uh, set those standards and then.
Oh, absolutely.
If there's a petition that comes for us again.
And I would just need some information. Okay. I'd be familiar with that.
Uh, yeah, okay, other than that, I, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Mr. Briere?
Uh, Mark Brier speaking, Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to reiterate my belief that the Society of Saint Vincent de Paul, uh, truly does God's work. So, for me, it's very exciting to see a new, larger facility to, uh, better serve our community. I just have one quick question, and I want to, I want to be very careful to note that this is not a criticism, but rather a curiosity. And where the average sign, you know, doesn't exceed, you know, per regulation, doesn't exceed thirty, thirty square feet, why the need for almost double the, the signage space for each, uh, face of the sign?
If, uh, if I may, this is Dan again. The, we're asking for an additional twenty-six square feet, and, um, part, part of it is due to the, the, um, the readability of the messaging portion of the sign along with the name. If we only had one and not the other in either case, that thirty square foot would be fine. But to add both, if a message center is so, is, is, uh, so small that the character height is diminished to two to three or four inches, it's, it's just not readable, particularly in moving traffic. So which kind of.
Agreed.
Size letter, so not to be, ease, ease of readability, so it's not distracting, but yet they need to find the location as well, if they're, if they're searching for Saint Vincent de Paul. That's why we're requesting the additional square footage.
Okay, thank you for your answer, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Any further comments, Mr. Briere?
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. PAC?
Um, this is Van PAC, the Vice Chairman, um, through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, I, I do want to echo, uh, the same comments as, as Mr. Briere, uh, in terms of, um, Saint Vincent de Paul, um, you know, this, this Drift Store or Donation Center, it's been a staple in downtown for, for probably decades, if not several decades. And, uh, you know, I, I think, you know, like he said, you guys do amazing work. Um, you know, in, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, I, I know the, the seeking relief of twenty-six foot for the freestanding sign, um, and, and I understand that, um, you know, it's, it's a little bit of, of a hefty relief, but I think it could be granted, um, you know, that, that new, that new location where they're at, that Middlesex Stairway District is kind of perfect for this, this kind of business, and it, it blends in well with the other businesses. So I don't think it would be like intruding or too intrusive or. And it, it blends in well with the other businesses. So I don't think it would be like intruding or too intrusive or detrimental to any other businesses in, in any way or any, any other butters in the area as well. So I, I do wanna applaud the good work that, uh, St. Vincent de Paul does. And, um, will continue to do the, with helping and donating and giving low coffings or free things to, to people. Um, so, uh, in my opinion, I, I, I see this relief can be granted. Um, so I will be voting in favor, and I wish you the best of luck. Uh, those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So you've heard the, uh, the comments of the board. There was the one, uh, cond- there's two conditions on hours of illumination and approval for the, uh, permit. Are you acceptable to those conditions?
Yes, I am.
Hey, that being said, Mr. Clerk, may I have a motion?
Yeah, thank you. This is Clerk, uh, Sean Callahan. Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on VB twenty twenty dash twelve. Uh, so doing two votes, one for special permit and one for variance. So start with the special permit under section six point three point two nine for fourteen eighty-eight Middlesex Street for internal illumination of a freestanding sign. With the condition, uh, illumination shall be from one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset or close, whichever is later. And the second condition is to work with DPD on setting guidelines for message timing and turnover on the, uh, on the message board.
May I have a second?
Mark Brier seconds the motion.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve special permit with condition.
Member Peck?
Uh, approve special permit with condition.
Member Callahan?
Approve special permit with condition.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
So you've been approving the amnesty for your special permit. That being said, may I have a motion for a variance? Mr. Clerk?
Clerk Sean, Clerk Sean Callahan. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, VB twenty twenty dash twelve. Uh, I'd like to make a motion for variance approval under section six point three point two B for size of a freestanding sign for fourteen eighty-eight Middlesex Street with the previously mentioned condition.
May I have a second?
Uh, Vice Chairman Van Peck, um, second to motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve variance with condition.
Member Peck?
Approve variance condition.
Member Callahan?
Approve variance with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
So you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck with your sign and continued success with St. Vincent de Paul. Appreciate your calling in tonight.
Great. Thank you very much.
Take care, stay safe. Take care. This is Chairman Perrin, moving on in the new business, VB twenty twenty dash twenty-three for a special permit, Young, Jang, and Caro Signa- Signorama, two eleven Plain Street, Unit Three, Section six point three point four. Signorama seeking special permit approval to install internally illuminated sign at two eleven Plain Street, Unit Three for elevation day spa. Building is a high-rise commercial HRC zoning district. Internal illumination requires special permit approval under section six point three point four for approximately twenty-six square feet wall sign and a twenty-two square foot sign with the existing freestanding sign for the shopping plaza and for any other relief required on low zoning ordinance. The petitioner here? We have the petitioner? For two eleven Plain Street. Hello, how are you, sir? You mind giving us the background on-
Hi, uh, my name's Yong. Uh, I'm a, uh, I'm the owner of the Signorama, uh, in Champs-Burg. Uh, this is for the project, um, in, uh, two eleven, uh, Plain Street.
Okay. You just told us a little bit about the sign, purpose?
Uh, yes, the sign, the, the channel letters.
Okay. Any other comments at this time?
Mm-hmm. Excuse me?
Any other comments?
Uh, no, there are no other, uh, comments. Uh, there's, um, uh, is this hearing, uh, start yet or, or are we, uh, do I need to wait?
Yeah. We are live right now, sir, yes. So, uh, we've read your petition into, into the public record. At, at this point, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up, um, to the public, and then I'm gonna open it up to the board for comments.
Okay.
So, that being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Okay.
In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Mark?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Mr. Peck?
Um, this is Vice Chairman Peck. Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I, I think, you know, the sign makes sense. I'm looking at the, the sign, uh, the photos and all that and, and the, the plans. It, it looks good. And, you know, I, I, I wish the, the petitioner well. You know, it is, it is a very busy plaza and hopefully they, they do well, the elevation, the lawn, small business. So welcome to Lowe and, um, best of luck with your, uh, with your business. Uh, those are my comments for the chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Callahan?
Thank you, uh, through Sean, Clerk Sean Callahan. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, yeah, I share the same sentiment. Thank you. I don't, uh, have any real concerns about this. I know, uh, one question that DPD did bring up in their memo was, um, uh, I'd like to just know what the operating hours of the salon are, uh, what, do you know what the operating hours, hours are, uh, for the petitioner?
Uh, uh, uh-
Yeah?
Yeah, the, this is Yong, uh, uh, from Signorama. Uh, so, uh, could you say the background again? Um, my English is not very good, so-
We look at the, the operating hours for the salon. Do you know what they are?
Uh, uh, she didn't give me the, uh, uh, exact hours yet, uh, because, uh, uh, she's not open right now. So, um, uh, I, I guess it's, it's just a, a regular, like a regular, uh, salon, uh, from nine to five or six. Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure about this, but, uh, um, I, I don't have the, 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 the files or the, the hours yet.
Well, this is in the middle of the Meadowbrook Plaza. I'm not sure if this is something that we regularly put the illumination restrictions on. Uh, maybe this is something, and I'll leave it again. Maybe I'll ask, uh, Mr. Chairman or Mr. Vice Chairman or Member Brier, uh, their thoughts on maybe another administrative review on this. I mean, I don't think it really, I'm thinking, I'm leaning towards not being, not it really being necessary considering the area and considering the, considering the, uh, no, it's, it's in the middle of the-
Yeah.
Area, business.
I remember it.
Retail business area, uh. Uh, otherwise, I, I, I'm in approval of this, but, I mean, I'll listen to my other fellow board members.
Okay. So, that being said, uh, Mr. Clerk, if my memory serves, may, um, uh, previous approvals, um, we made a condition that the illumination of signs are consistent with those within the plaza. And then we did-
Okay, yeah, that accepts, yeah.
And we did have an administrative review after six months just to ensure that those, uh, items were, um, adhered to. So, sir, we're looking at two, two petitions that you, the light, like that, the illumination of the sign will be consistent with the other businesses within the plaza. And then we would like to have you come back in front of the board, uh, six months after opening,
Uh-huh.
uh, for an administrative review. Are those acceptable terms to you?
Okay, yeah. Sounds good to me. Uh, I will double check with the, uh, the, uh, the owner of the, uh, of the, uh, the business. And, uh, I will report to the cap.
So if you could just get those hours of illumination, uh, straight, uh, the, oh, the hours of, uh, opening for the services, provide that to DPD, uh, that'll be fine. And we can move on with the vote. Any other comments on the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Van Peck, if I may, sir.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I, I, I agree with, with your comments, uh, Mr. Callahan, um, about the six-month review and, um, you know, uh, and all the other conditions that, that you mentioned for the, uh, applicant. So I'm, I'm in favor of the, the six-month review condition and, you know, all that. So I just want to say that, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments by the board members? None being said, Chairman Perrin is requesting a motion.
This is Clerk Sean Callahan, uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on VB twenty twenty dash twenty-three for special permit for two eleven Plain Street, Unit Three, under section six point three point four, uh, for an internally illuminated sign with the condition that the illumination of the sign will remain consistent with other businesses within the, uh, location, plaza location, and a, uh, six-month administrative review to be scheduled by DPD.
That being said, may I have a second?
Mark Brier seconds the motion.
So before we move for the vote, uh, we only have four members on call tonight. You must attain a four, uh, zero approval. If we have one nay, uh, your petition is fatal. Do you wish to move forward with the vote? Sir, do you wish to move forward with your vote this evening? Mr. Zhang, would you like to move forward with the vote this evening?
Uh, yes, uh, I, uh, I, uh, let me, uh-
Did you accept it, you accept the conditions and you wanna move forward with the vote?
Yes. Yes, please. Uh, because, uh, uh, may I say, uh, another thing, uh?
Sure.
Another point. Yeah, uh-
Okay.
At the beginning, I, I didn't know, uh, I, I, I'm on the, I'm, I'm the first one to, to, to say about it. Um, the only thing I, uh, want to say is, uh, this, uh, plaza is, uh, they have a lot of the, uh, business, you know, gentlemen, you, everybody, everybody know about this. And, uh, this tenant, um, uh, I can see the shadow of a, a, old, uh, channel letters. Um, so they used to have some, uh, the, the former tenant has, uh, had a, a, uh, uh, same kind of channel letters on there. And, uh, when they moved, they took off the old one. So, uh, basically, uh, so, uh, I, I think that it, it'll be okay. It's not a new project. Um, so that, that's what I wa- just want to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments by the board? That being said, may I have a motion, please, Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on VB twenty twenty dash, actually, I already made the motion. Uh, we didn't, we didn't make the roll call, right?
No, we just had comments by the petitioner, so I just wanna-
Yeah, but I made the motion. I think I made the motion.
Okay.
Okay, let's try it again. Sorry. VB twenty twenty dash twenty-three for a special permit, uh, um, under section six point three point four for internally illuminated sign, uh, on, on two eleven Plain Street, Unit Three, with the condition that the illumination hours will remain consistent with other businesses within the plaza where the business is located. And a six-month administrative review to be scheduled by DPD.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Mark Brier seconds the motion.
Thank you. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approval conditions?
Member Peck?
Approve with conditions?
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
So your petition has been approved. Wish you the best of luck. Thanks for calling in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Might, uh, Chairman Perrin, I'd like to move forward under section three, other business. Extension request for a special permit at four eighty-four Merrimack Street. The applicant for four eighty-four Merrimack Street has requested an extension to their special permit approval. Special permit will expire on June fifth, twenty twenty. The applicant has not been able to begin the project due to delay finalization of construction plans. We have the petitioner online?
I just dialed him, so he should be joining shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is George Theodore. Good evening.
Good evening, Counselor. How are you?
I'm doing well. I'm doing well. I look forward to, uh, having a hearing while I'll be able to see everybody and be there.
Well said, sir, well said. Uh, so we've read, we've read your extension request into public record. If you just don't mind, um, speaking on it, please?
No, uh, um, we obtained, uh, uh, a, a variance, uh, for, uh, off-street parking and for a minimum access drive and setbacks, uh, uh, to access the parking in the rear, as well as for relief with three additional spaces for commercial use, uh, for the variance. And, uh, we worked very closely with, uh, the historic board, uh, uh, Steve Stoll did a great job in design review. Uh, the hangup that we had in moving this forward was, uh, with the building department where they wanted us to go ahead and put and install an elevator in the building which would have changed the whole design. And, uh, the, uh, the, the, the owner contractor had to go to the, um, State Building Commissioner to remove that as a requirement. Uh, that took an inordinate, inordinate period of, uh, of time. Uh, we worked with the building department the whole time, and that was finally resolved. And one of the other hangups was the design that they had, uh, was a poor design with respect to the sprinkler system that had the sprinklers overhead of the, uh, the, uh, stoves, the stove tops, which had to be redone. So, we went through all this, uh, and, uh, as a result, uh, we filed for an extension with the planning board for the special permit that we, uh, we received, uh, for use and for the fifty percent reduction. And that was approved last week, and we summarily applied, uh, uh, for this extension as well. And we ask, uh, that we be given a, a, a one-year extension, uh, which I think we're gonna need every bit of that.
Okay, great. We appreciate that. Um, that being said, Chairman Perrin, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Uh, Van Peck, please?
Um, Vice Chairman, uh, Peck here. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm fine with this, uh, extension, uh, Mr. Chairman. I mean, you know, through the permitting process, like Mr. Theodore said, it, you know, it just went to different directions. And they had to, uh, do the, a, a bunch of different planning and process for, for his, for the project. And due to the circumstances that I was facing right now, I think an extension is warranted. So, you know, I'm all in favor of the, the one-year extension. Um, so, so I'll be voting in favor of that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Callahan?
Sean Callahan, Clerk. Thank you. This is through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I share the same sentiment as, uh, Vice Chairman Peck. Uh, the, I've seen circumstances, uh, on, uh, this, with your guys through the building and having them putting in a elevator and stuff. It's, but it seems like otherwise the project is going, it looks like it is going forward and the applicant is, uh, adamant to try to get this, uh, taken care of. And, uh, and I would be, uh, in approval of, uh, granting the extension for another year as well. I wish you the best of luck, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Brier?
Mark Brier, Mr. Chairman, I, I support the extension.
Thank you. So Counselor, you have been approved, uh, recommendation for extension. Uh, may I have a motion and a roll call for record? Any other comments, Counselor, prior?
Uh, no, I, I, I appreciate, uh, I appreciate the action of the board, and, and I also appreciate, uh, the, uh, the work with DPD and the heads-up. Uh, they're very, very, been very, very good in, 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 uh, alerting applicants as to the, the timing of these matters. And, uh, and, uh, they, uh, they did a great job.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate those kind words. As always, we, we're very appreciative of the, uh, of the department we have and the efforts they take in behalf of, uh, petitioners and, and for the public. So, I would seek a motion.
This is Clerk Sean Callahan, through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on VB two thousand eighteen dash fourteen for four eighty-four Merrimack Street for extension of, uh, pre- Merrimack Street for extension of, uh, previously granted variances for one year.
May I have a second?
Uh, Vice Chairman Peck, uh, my second to the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman requests a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approve the extension of four eighty-four Merrimack Street.
Member Peck?
Uh, approve the extension.
Member Callahan?
Approve extension for one year.
Member Brier?
Approve extension.
Counselor, you've been approved for your extension. We wish you the best of luck in this process. Uh, stay healthy and-
Thank you very much, and, uh, my, uh, best wishes to everybody on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Have a good evening.
You too.
Take care. Uh, we're moving forward for minutes for approval. We have minutes for approval for March ninth, twenty twenty. Uh, everyone have an opportunity to review those, any edits or comments? None being noted? May I have a motion?
Uh, this is Clerk Sean Callahan, through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of March ninth, twenty twenty.
May I have a second?
Uh, Mark Brier seconds the motion.
May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approve the acceptance of the minutes for March ninth.
Member Peck?
Um, a- approve the minutes for March ninth.
Member Callahan?
Approve minutes for March ninth, twenty twenty.
Member Brier?
Approve minutes.
That being said, we have accepted the minutes. We have any other comments or concerns from the members of the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, sir, Vice Chairman Peck here?
Yes.
Uh, I, I just wanted to, to wish everyone who's listening, um, a happy Cambodian, lost entire New Year, that they were celebrating the New Year, so, uh, I'm sure people are celebrating at home and within their, within their families at home, so, I want to wish you a, a New Year, happy New Years. Um, that's it. One person privilege. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I share the same, uh, happy New Year, I wish you, uh, all the, the, uh, people, uh, Cambodia as well, and, uh, and I hope everybody stays safe. Uh, on another note, I want to congratulate, uh, Francesca Simeono on her, uh, ascension to an associate planner. I know we talked about it earlier, but on the public record now, uh, so congratulations, Fran, on your promotion. Uh, also, Jared has been promoted to senior planner as well, based on his email, so I want to, uh, wish him congratulations, uh, as well on, on, on the public record too. Congratulations to you both. You have a great staff at DPD, and, uh, it's great working with you guys, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. Well said. Any other comments?
I, I agree, Mr. Callahan, Mr. Chairman. Uh, congratulations to, to, uh, Miss Francesca and, and to, uh, Jared as well.
Right. That being, being said, I, I'd just like to, uh, place on the record, I, I wish, uh, hopeful that everyone had a happy and safe Easter. I wish everyone a happy and safe Greek Easter, and happy Cambodian New Year to all our fellow citizens. I want to, uh, congratulate, uh, DPD staff for their, um, continued success in internal promotions that is prevalent with, with this, uh, group of young professionals. Uh, once again, we, uh, we're very fortunate in the great city of Lowell to have such competent, uh, vigorous, committed staff, uh, supporting us on a, on a weekly basis, on, you know, daily basis on all the boards. And I, I wish, uh, all the citizens of the great city, um, good health and safety during this unprecedented time to, to all and their families, and hopefully we'll all be out, uh, sharing the wealth of the city and our community soon. Any other comments? I appreciate everyone's time. I, I want to thank, uh, DPD and the City of Lowell governance bodies for, uh, providing public access, um, to public meetings. Uh, this is a unique process for all of us, and I, I want to congratulate my colleagues and, uh, Francesca for, uh, doing a wonderful job, um, during this conference call and, and teleconference, uh, to maintain, uh, the integrity of public access, uh, to public boards throughout the city. That being said, may I have a motion to dismiss?